We're good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Welcome, everybody. This is a special meeting of the Planning Commission. More specifically, is the Affordable Housing Information Session. We're at September 18th, 2025, and it's past seven. It's about 7:06 in Room 133, the Brookfield Town Hall. Today, we have present myself, Scott Dale, on the chair. We have Linda Taylor, who is the secretary. We have Mark Lowengart, who is a regular member. And we also have Elaine Temania, who is our alternate here. So we have four members of the Planning Commission present. Why are we here today? So the Planning Commission, last meeting, the last regular meeting on September 4th, voted unanimously to adopt our Plan of Conservation and Development. As sort of a tag-along project, but not until after the POCD was done, we discussed addressing the Affordable Housing Plan because a lot of the efforts that took place with the POCD aligned with the Affordable Housing Plan. So it's really what we're trying to do is accomplish an additional task on behalf of the town so that we can move forward. So, and it's, and a lot of the work that was done on the POCD, specifically with regard to the Housing Chapter, it can be used also to update the Affordable Housing Plan. So we're taking advantage of the timing, and I think we have Emily from BFJ, who is here, to get into some specifics. We'll see how this could be advantageous for the town going forward as far as aligning our calendars. So, as I said, we do have Emily Tolbert here from BFJ Planning, who's been our partner with the POCD and is also our partner for the Affordable Housing Plan. And she is going to present some information to everybody about our Affordable Housing Plan. I believe there were some slides. We're trying to just get them updated and available, but they will be online for people to follow. Anyway, thank you. And we do have Emily Tolbert here from BFJ.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the introduction, Scott. Again, I'm Emily Tolbert from BFJ Planning, and I'm going to talk a bit about Brookfield's Affordable Housing Plan 2025 Update. The draft Affordable Housing Plan is available on the town's website at www.b Brookfieldct.gov-planning- oh, sorry, I should say backslash planning-commission. And if you are here in person, there's also some copies that are printed up front. This is just a draft plan right now, so we will be revising it after we hear comments today and as we continue to review the document. I have to thank everyone from the Planning Commission, particularly the Chair, Scott Dale, and Linda Taylor, the Secretary, Mark Lowengart, and Elaine Temania, who have been here at pretty much every meeting for the POCD and for the Affordable Housing Plan Development. I also thank the town staff, Laura Barkowski, the Director of Land Use, who has been through this whole process, coordinating everything amongst the town, and Greg Dombowski, Economic and Community Development Director, who has provided lots of data and input and insights into this document. And from BFJ Planning, we have myself, and then also the principal in charge on this project is Frank Fish. He's not able to be here tonight. So I'm going to quickly go through the project schedule. On the project schedule, we kind of had our kickoff meeting for the Affordable Housing Plan specifically in early June, but the data collection and analysis, we really were doing that at the same time that we were doing the POCD. So lots of the data and analysis that we collected for the POCD was ongoing, and in June, we consolidated that for the Affordable Housing Plan. Over the summer, we were writing the draft of the plan, and we submitted that to the Planning Commission for their review. We posted it online at the end of August, and we had another meeting with the Planning Commission in early September. Tonight, we have this public informational meeting, and then following this, we will be making revisions to the document and have a final plan towards the end of the month, and potentially will be adopting it at the next Planning Commission meeting. So as Scott said earlier, this really builds off the Plan of Conservation and Development that was adopted on September 4th. It incorporates text, data analysis, and graphics from the POCD chapters, particularly Chapter 4 Housing, but it also includes the work that we did for demographic trends, land use and zoning, transportation and mobility, and infrastructure. So the idea was that if the town is investing in doing this POCD update, why not use all of this information gathered along with the graphics, maps, demographics, and put that together in the Affordable Housing Plan? Additionally, updating the 2022 Affordable Housing Plan that the town has now will align that plan's five-year cycle with the 10-year cycle of the Plan of Conservation and Development. So that really sets you up for the next time you need to adopt an Affordable Housing Plan. You can do that again at the same time that you're updating your POCD. So this also builds off of the outreach that was conducted for the 2025 Plan. In particular, we gleaned some insights from a public survey that was open in January and February. We got over 670 responses on that survey. We also did interviews with stakeholders, including town staff and various other agencies who are involved in the town, and we talked to over 30 different people. We had two public workshops for the POCD, and at the second public workshop on April 22nd, we did have a housing table where the discussion was around issues related to housing and development in the town. And participants at that workshop could also talk about housing at any of the tables at that workshop. There was a public hearing on the POCD in August, and we also incorporated some of the feedback we heard there into this Affordable Housing Plan. So what is the content of the plan? This Affordable Housing Plan starts with an introduction that kind of gives the backing, like the legal backing for why we're doing the plan. I'll talk a little bit more about that, but what the state statutes say and why we need to do this. Chapter 2 is on the history of affordable housing in Brookfield, so that's really looking at the numbers and what initiatives Brookfield has taken in the past to work towards the state's target of 10% affordable housing. Chapter 3 is a housing needs assessment, and this chapter really brings together those chapters from the POCD, including the demographic and economic indicators that we provided in the POCD, housing supply and market trends based on data that we used in the POCD, and it also looks at the housing market and the Connecticut Fair Housing Study. Chapter 4, Land Use and Zoning Assessment. This just looks at your existing zoning and land use patterns in the town and identifies some issues and opportunities. We're going to go through these a little bit later in the presentation. And then finally, Chapter 5 is about goals and actions, many of which are included in the adopted POCD and a few additional ones. So taking this back a little bit, why does Brookfield need an Affordable Housing Plan? Well, first to mention, Brookfield already does have an Affordable Housing Plan that was adopted in 2022, but Connecticut General Statutes, Section 830-J, requires municipalities to prepare at least once every five years. A municipality must demonstrate how it intends to, one, increase the number of affordable housing developments in the municipality, and, two, improve the accessibility of affordable housing units for individuals with an intellectual disability or other developmental disabilities. So the statute's overall purpose and intention is to enable low- and moderate-income individuals and families to access high-opportunity communities where residents have access to high-quality education, public services, recreational assets, and, of course, quality So what happens if Brookfield didn't have an Affordable Housing Plan? Well, the Affordable Housing Plan allows the town to be proactive about how it's going to address affordable housing needs in the town rather than letting the appeals procedure under 830-G control the production. So many of you may be familiar with the Connecticut General Statute, Section 830-G, Affordable Housing Land Use Appeals Procedure. This applies to municipalities with less than 10% overall affordable housing, and we'll talk a little bit about how that is calculated, that do not have an active affordable housing moratorium approved by the state. And just to note here, Brookfield currently does have a moratorium that is set to expire in 2026. If a commission denies or unduly restricts an affordable housing application, the developer can appeal the Superior Court, which can then override local zoning denials. So basically, what that's saying is that if a board in your town denies an affordable housing application for reasons that don't have to do with public health and safety, they may be able to come in and build whatever they want. So the idea here is to be proactive and to direct how development is occurring in the town rather than being reactive when someone comes in with a proposal. And the burden of proof of just cause for denial of an application is on the municipality. So this really ends up coming back to the municipality and becomes their responsibility to defend themselves. So what type of affordable housing does the state count towards that 10%? So looking at Section 830-G, subsection K, the types of housing that count include assisted housing, which is housing that receives some kind of financial assistance from a government program, housing that's currently financed by the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority mortgages, which include single-family homes, housing subject to deeds and conditions restricting its sale or rental to low- and moderate-income people. And just a little more detail on that, the idea of affordable is that persons and families are paying 30% or less of their income towards housing costs, and that income needs to be less than or equal to 80% of the median income. So that, in Brookfield, that's based on the state median income. The 80% median income threshold, just to give an example of what that refers to, that's a four-person family that's making $97,000 or less per year. And rent maximums in, for a two-bedroom apartment at 80% of median income would be about $1,900 per month. So when we're talking about affordable housing, these are some of the factors that are considered there. In addition, mobile homes and accessory apartments that are subject to similar deed restrictions, and also mobile manufactured homes located in resident-owned, mobile-manufactured home parks. Okay, so now, looking a little bit closer about Brookfield, you're probably wondering, well, how much affordable housing does Brookfield have? So every year, there is a report that goes to the state where all of these different types of affordable housing that we just went through are, the number of them are reported, and that total count is compared to the number of total housing counted in the most recent decennial census. So right now, the most recent decennial census count for Brookfield was 7,116 units in 2020, and there were a total of 371 affordable housing units. So that gives us 5.21% of affordable housing. Just to give you a little bit of comparison to some of the neighboring towns to Brookfield, so Bethel is at a pretty similar rate of 5.3% affordable housing, whereas, as you might expect, Danbury, which is a city, has 10.59% of affordable housing. And some of the other towns nearby, Bridgewater, for example, only has .23% of affordable housing, and I guess Newtown only has 2.88%. So that just kind of gives you an idea of where Brookfield falls with its neighbors. And so what kind of progress has Brookfield been making towards the state's target of 10% affordable housing? So on this slide that many of you can't see online right now, but we'll fix that, is a table that goes from 2002 through 2024, and then has, also has projections for 2025 through 2027. So Brookfield has done a really good job at increasing its percentage of affordable housing. If we look back at 2005, there was only .83% affordable housing in Brookfield, and that has increased to 5.21% in 2024. So Brookfield's made a lot of progress, and the state has recognized that by granting moratoriums. And just to clarify, those moratoriums, they suspend that ability for developers to sue the town if they are denied an affordable housing application. And so we were curious about, you know, how, how these numbers are going to look in the coming years. So we did some projections, looking at how many affordable housing units are expected to be produced in the coming years, and we did a couple of estimates. One is using that 2020 decennial census baseline, which is what the state is using when they're doing that calculation of 10% affordable housing, and the other is an adjusted, an adjusted percent of affordable housing based on an estimate of the actual number of units in Brookfield. The 2020 census was done, you know, five years ago. There's been a lot of development since then, so that baseline number of housing units is actually higher. So on this chart, we compare that, and what the state might see in 2027 on their Affordable Housing Appeals list might be about 6.38%, which looks really good for Brookfield. But something we wanted to call out is that the actual number, when you're considering an estimated total number of housing units, is closer to 5.87. So it's not a huge difference, but it does make a little bit of a difference. And especially as you get closer to 2030, when that baseline census number changes, this may have an effect on the percentage of affordable housing units that the state sees Brookfield producing. So we just wanted to highlight that here. Okay, so in the final chapters of the Affordable Housing Plan, you see that we identify some issues and opportunities. These are all things that were also identified in the Plan of Conservation and Development. So the first one is sewer capacity. We understand that any kind of development, whether it's for housing or commercial purposes or industrial uses, may be limited unless the capacity is increased, the sewer capacity. So we're right up against the sewer moratorium in the town, so there's a limited amount of increased development that the town can accommodate. Housing demand, there is a very low availability rate of housing in Brookfield, so the vacancy rates are around 5%, but when you actually look at the number of units that are actually available for rent or sale, that's around 1%. So it's a very tight housing market, and that type of competition can drive up costs and leave people who are seeking new housing opportunities from having any choice in which housing that they're taking. Residents have said that they need different types of affordable housing, and we also see that the new multifamily developments that have come to Brookfield do have 100% occupancy rates. Another opportunity that we've identified is keeping empty nesters and attracting young professionals. So the idea here is that seniors who have lived in Brookfield for a long time, maybe raised their families in a house that has a few bedrooms, and now those children have gone off to start their own families elsewhere, or went off to college, or gone to a city to work, or whatnot, those empty nesters now have this large, single-family home, and they might not be able to maintain that much space. They might not be able to do all of the housework or all of the yard work, and they may be looking for a smaller unit that requires less maintenance. We also want to attract young professionals to the town, so part of that is having a diversity of housing types, so that different household compositions, whether you're a single person who just graduated college and is starting out your career and may not have a lot of money to spend, or if you are a small family and you don't need a large, single-family home, we want to make sure that there are a diversity of housing choices in Brookfield. We've also heard the concern about overdevelopment. There has been a lot of multifamily housing production in the town, and there are fears that they're changing the town's built characteristics, the way that the town looks, the aesthetics of the town, and potentially outpacing the town's ability to provide essential services. In doing the POCD research, we did talk to a lot of the service providers in the town, and there is maybe not as much truth to that. The fire department is capable of providing services to the current development that exists in the town right now. Recent and potential future Connecticut state legislation. So Connecticut is working on changing legislations. It's changed stuff in the past few years, particularly a kind of landmark, Public Act in 2021 changed a lot of approaches to affordable housing, planning, and zoning. But there are also stuff that is being talked about currently by legislative bodies that will affect affordable housing policies in municipalities in Connecticut. All right, and then finally, we get into goals and actions. So there are three main goals that we've broken this down into, and then each of the goals has some recommendations underneath. So the first one is to concentrate moderate to high-density development in areas where infrastructure, such as water, sewer, and roads, are in place. This includes multifamily housing, large-scale commercial development, and mixed-use development. The recommendations here are following smart-growth principles in the development of commercial districts and sewered area along the federal road corridor, particularly the town center district. And just to clarify for those who aren't familiar with the term smart-growth, the idea here is about concentrating development where you have services, like access to transportation, where you have infrastructure, where you have access to maybe commercial development. So several policies such as mixed-use development or complete streets policies that you have at your four corners area are kind of what we're talking about when we're talking about smart-growth. Another recommendation here is working with the WPCA and regional municipal leaders to increase sewer capacity to accommodate future residential, commercial, and industrial development. So Brookfield does not run its own sewer operation. It relies on Danbury for capacity, so this is another limitation, and this would require a lot of coordination between the region to be able to actually increase sewer capacity. So the second goal is to provide affordable housing options for a variety of income levels, including middle, moderate, and low-income households in Brookfield. So I'm going to just summarize the recommendations here. The first one is about communicating various programs to the community that can help offset their housing costs, such as the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority Mortgage and Loan Programs, and the United States Department of Agriculture Single Family Home Programs. Also, we have on here promoting the Housing Choice voucher program, which is for rental assistance and is managed through the Danbury Housing Authority. Some of our other recommendations include clarifying multifamily density bonus to align with 830-G. So this is a recommendation about the zoning code that was also included in the POCD, considering an inclusionary zoning requirement for developments of a certain size, considering an incentive for workforce housing. So workforce housing is typically for those that are above that 80% median income threshold. Those between like 100% and 120% are also strained in the housing market currently, so it's providing housing for those working people. Reducing fees for affordable housing development, that's in line with the Public Act from 2021 I mentioned earlier, and supporting WestCog in the establishment of an Affordable Housing Resource Center, which comes from a recent report that WestCog did. And so we are just echoing what they are advocating for there. The third goal is encouraging a wide array of housing types to provide options for older residents to age in place and to attract young professionals and families to reside in Brookfield. So some of the ways that the town can do that is revising the town code to comply with Public Act 2129. That's the one I keep mentioning. There are a lot of items in that provisions in that Public Act that make recommendations that are really about encouraging the ability to provide diversity of housing in municipalities in Connecticut. Removing unnecessary barriers in the accessory apartment code, revising multifamily dwelling code to reevaluate caps on the number of units, reevaluating the minimum floor area requirements in your code, and also considering allowing townhomes in subdivisions and enabling the Planning and Zoning Commission to mandate conservation subdivisions. So I know I just threw out a bunch of unfamiliar terms there, but those are defined in the Affordable Housing Plan and in the POCD, if you want to read more about those recommendations. All right, so now I'm going to open it up for comments and questions, and for anyone who is listening online or in person, we're also going to be accepting comments by email beginning tomorrow. The email address is planning@brookfieldct.gov, and we're accepting comments by email through September 24th. All right.
And the process will be that any of those, any of that feedback that we will receive will be incorporated, well, we will then consider that when we have our next Planning Commission to see if we need to adjust anything in the Affordable Housing Plan. Okay?
Yes.
All right. Planning, it's planning@brookfieldct.gov. Any comments or questions from our audience?
I'd like to make just one comment if I can.
Sure. Name an address in case anybody does not know who you are.
Pardon me?
Name an address.
Greg Dombowski, I am not a Brookfield resident, but I am the Economic Development Manager for Brookfield. Somebody might wonder, how in the heck can the housing, affordable housing inventory increase even though we've had a moratorium for six years? How can that be? There's two reasons. Number one, there were a couple large 830-G projects approved prior to the moratorium that are just now starting construction, or started construction earlier in 2025. The second reason is, we at one time had two incentive housing zones. One was actually called the workforce zone, and those projects are also, they have been and continue to be under construction. There's a couple large incentive housing projects that where construction hasn't started, and they're not even on that gray, that orange zone in your box, because, for example, 777, I'm not sure when that's going to start, and I don't project, we don't project it to start within the next three years. So those are the two reasons why our affordable housing inventory increases even though for six years we've had an 830-G moratorium. I just wanted to make that point.
Okay. Thank you. Will our other member of the audience like to make any comments?
Yeah, I mean, I would, not yet, because that's correct. For the record, Greg Steiner, owners of the Berkshire Corporate Park, and I live at Seven Hamlin Court. Just, this was informational for me also. It's just interesting that I probably am a little late to this now, but we're actually doing a small planned community in Bethel, right, by En Route 6 and Benedict Road, and it was originally zoned for commercial with like a high-end, like a four-story apartments if it was in the commercial zone. And we were able to work with Peter Olson, and we kind of worked with the town, so we didn't want to build that, but we wanted to do smaller, they're not workforce homes, but they're smaller residential homes. And my kids are out in Colorado, so they're much more like what's being built out west, where we have 22 units on about seven acres of property. We've developed about three to four of the acres of the houses, and they're close, they're 10 feet apart, but we've been very actively, I mean, we've got 11 up, nine moved into, we're selling two more, and we're going to be able to finish off the subdivision, if you will, it's an HOA. And it's just interesting that I think as we go forward with trying to become more usable with this affordable housing, in one way, we need density, but I don't know if the density always has to be four-story apartment buildings. I think we looked at it and said, you know, we're single-family home builders. We really want to do something more of a single-family home like we built Jimmy Heights years ago. So we kind of came in and said, even though it's tight by Connecticut standards, it's kind of how the rest of the world, as they develop, work through. So it'd be nice to somehow throw, put that concept in that you don't have just one acre lots, that if you have three to four or five acres and you do have water and sewer, if you put half of the property in conservation, you can get the density that you need as a developer to put the infrastructure in, but also be able to come in. So we're coming in the 600s to 700s, which is still, it's not affordable, but it's still more reasonable than the million dollars or whatever you need to on a single-family lot. So I just think it's something that it'd be nice to see more of those around, but with Brookfield now, a lot of the properties that you have are previously developed, so it's going to be hard to find. I would love to find another parcel that would have seven, eight, nine acres and almost craft a zone specifically to what we just did from Bethel into Brookfield. But right now, there's not, you know, we don't have that zoning capacity to do that, and we have a couple pieces of property. We're thinking of doing something similar, but not exactly the same. So I just, you know, there are ways, I think, but you have to realize that as a developer, you need, and density is kind of a tough word to say these days, but you need to have enough units to help pay for the infrastructure- enough units to help pay for, the infrastructure costs are amazing with the stormwater management system, the new building codes are amazing, how expensive this stuff is. So it's really hard to keep things affordable unless you do these big apartment buildings that are four stories and then to get to the workforce housing. So it's really a tough call, and I don't know what the answer is. Just I want to let you know that there is, there are different ways of doing it, I just don't know if, you know, if we have the zoning capacity yet, but then again, we don't have the land to do it, so I don't know what's going to happen with that. I mean, I look at some of those vacant parcels that you're talking about on the four corners, and it would be nice to have like a little subdivision of little houses there, but I don't think we could do that in today's zoning regulations anyway. And a lot of developers wouldn't look at it that way. They say, well, I need to develop the density in order to either meet the 830-G or to meet the requirements of that, so.
Okay.
Just a point of view from my side.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm just, I'm sorry. For the record, it's Fieldstone Commons is the name of our quote-unquote subdivision, and it's right on Benedict Road and Route Six in Bethel, right up from the Target.
Okay.
We'd welcome to have someone walk through too. I think, we think we're very proud of how it came out, and like I said, I think it's a good model for developing other communities, but the zoning doesn't, you know, we had to come up with a special zone in that space to do it.
I see. Thank you. Is there anybody else with comments or questions?
I want to come back with one.
Sure, go right in. And we have time.
So, you know, I think about Brookfield and where do we have large tracts of land that are undeveloped? And I've been, we've been looking and talking to property owners on Vale Road for years. Vale Road has sewer halfway down Vale Road. It's got potable water. It's got electricity. The only thing, and applicants have come to us years ago about multifamily housing there, but because of the overpasses, fire trucks can't get there, and the fire chiefs have said they would never, I'm paraphrasing, never approve a multi-story building there. But that doesn't mean it couldn't be zoned for the kind of thing Greg Steiner's talking about, or something that would not require an emergency, a fire truck to get there. So, and there are other ways to get to Vale Road, you don't have to come under those small overpasses, but it would require an upgrade of the intersection into Vale Road off of Stony Hill. So there are opportunities in large undeveloped parcels where we have told developers no under our old way of thinking, but if we really want to need to work towards more of the kind of things he's talking about, we would have to put together a pretty significant effort on Vale Road. Part of that road's not owned by the town, so it's not maintained by the town, and those are the kind of things that we have to work through. So I just want to make that point.
Any other comments and questions? For those who are not physically here, again, you can send your comments by email to planning@brookfieldct.gov as of tomorrow, I believe, right? Yeah, we have that, we'll have that open for you. And through September 24th, and we're going to be incorporating that, and we'll be updating the draft plan accordingly as we receive some feedback on that. And then the next planning commission will be discussing the outcome of all of that. At this point, anything further from BFJ on this today?
Just to let everyone know, we will post the slides, so that if you weren't able to see them online, you'll be able to see them.
Okay. Very good. Any comments from anybody here on the planning commission? Comments or questions?
No, I think this is a, I'm glad that we're doing this now, it's important, I think that it's aligning with the P O C D, so.
Yeah, and so, yeah, so as I just stated, we will be incorporating whatever feedback we get today or online, and then also anything, any comments that the members of the commission may have between now and then as well. And then we will discuss this, our next steps, at our next regular planning meeting, which is on October 2nd. All right, well, I think we could conclude this. Oh, Linda, would you like to make a question?
Should we make a question to a jury?
Is there a second?
I'll second.